Good evening, folks. It's six o'clock and I will now call this committee of the whole meeting to order on this Monday, June seventeenth. I'd also like to acknowledge that we are on the traditional lands of the Pasanik people. And I'll look for a movement to approve the agenda before us tonight.
Hello?
Second.
All in favor? Motion carried. First on the agenda is a presentation on the Crest Technology Renewal Project. And we have Gord Horst, the General Manager of Crest Emergency Communications. Thank you.
There we are. Thank you. Thanks very much, Mayor and Council, for having me out tonight. Just to give a bit of an overview of what we're doing on our project, on our technology renewal project. Some of you, including the mayor, have been involved in Crest for a long time, so I think this is mostly positive things that we're doing these days, so that's nice to hear. This is what the system looked like for the first fifteen, sixteen years, so there were ten transmission sites. And so the Sanich Peninsula was served by a site on Mount Newton, as you can see out there. When we're finished building, we will have about thirty-three sites. So on the Sanich Peninsula, we'll have Cloke Hill, which had been a repeater site before, becomes a full transmission site. And of course, we partnered with you folks when you're building a new community safety building to provide some space. So down the road, as the peninsula densifies over time, we'll have an additional site before we have to scramble and find one. We often find in urban centers, particularly Victorian Sanich, we're chasing development and, you know, we have to find new sites to fill in where we have coverage gaps because of new densities that are occurring. And so credit to Council and your staff for providing us the opportunity to partner. It's a cost-effective way and it's just good planning to be able to provide some, a small space in your new community safety building. So I think that's a great endeavor. And frankly, it shows leadership for some of the other local governments, too, so hopefully to leverage that activity and do more of that in the future. So, thank you. This is what one of our new towers looks like. It's in a park in Squamult, High Rock Park. Sits nice and high. It's the highest point in Squamult and it really provides a great coverage footprint, particularly for Squamult but into Victoria and also into View Royal. And just so you guys have a little bit of idea, I guess, on the technology, what it looks like when we ultimately deploy your community safety building. That's one of our microwave dishes. It's about two feet in diameter, so it's fairly innocuous. You probably won't even notice it. We have similar installation at Opey Beach Hotel and a number of sites in downtown Victoria. I doubt people really know that it's there. So just so you see, it's not particularly onerous. In the case of Squamult, it sits on a big tall pole, but we need that for the commanding height. Most often, we like to use buildings and we can camouflage it a bit, so we can fit into the urban environment. This is kind of an idea in terms of what we do. So lots of transmissions. We have fifty agencies that use the service. When the mayor was involved in Crest, we probably had about thirty-six agencies, and we've been gradually adding to those. And so police, fire, and ambulance, you know, BC Transit, a lot of bylaw agencies use the Crest service. You can see the number of radios that are deployed, the average volumes. During the windstorms that we had before Christmas this year, those volumes were considerably higher, considerably. Lots of activity. And we do get busies. The new system has more capacity. It's about thirty percent greater capacity than the current system, so this is numbers from the old system. So we will see the one busy for every, in this case, seven hundred and eleven calls, that number will go up because they'll have less busies. And in the public safety world, we strive for, it's called five nines, so ninety-nine point nine 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 percent of the time that the system is fully operational, all of the sites are active and available for use by emergency providers. And so we're very close. We're hoping to get those five nines on the new system when it's fully deployed at the end of this year. So you folks, we just did coverage testing on the Sanich Peninsula and we're in the process of accepting it from the vendor, which is Motorola. It passed the test. We try and provide, in our design, ninety-seven percent coverage everywhere, and that's kind of the highest public safety standard in North America. Most often stateside, you'll see ninety-five percent, and the number that goes up there is exponential beyond that. So it is difficult to provide a hundred percent coverage. In fact, I don't think it's possible. You're getting about ninety-eight percent on the Sanich Peninsula, just mostly because of the terrain, really. At the end of the day, there isn't too much difficult mountains, and we sit on top of Mount Newton, the highest point. And so we will, we're doing some live testing with the Airport Authority Fire Department tomorrow, and then we'll be doing soon with your fire department. And later this summer, we expect to have you guys cut over. Both, it'd be the fire first and then the police will come after the RCMP. RCMP are a little more challenging because they've got jurisdictions across the Crest region, and so we have to coordinate that activity. So it's not as straightforward as standalone fire departments, even with mutual aid. And we are still working. We still haven't got all our sites secured and built in the Gulf Islands and sort of beyond sort of west shore. And that's always the challenge in technology projects, is getting site availability, and often the community consultation that takes place is part of that. So, you know... So just speaking about, you know, planning in terms of, as you can see, just sort of depicts, you know, a radio antenna on top of there, and you get good coverage in through the building and on this side of it, obviously on the other side, because of the density, particularly with some of the new building materials that are in use today, some of the leads, things that keep heat in, keep radio signals out. So, I mean, what gains in technology sometimes not great for radio, and that's why we need additional sites to counteract that. So if another building goes up, and we're seeing that a lot in Sanich and Victoria, where we had good communications before, we're having some challenges. Interestingly enough, we had a radio link between the new site and Squamult in downtown Victoria. It's an important link for us to provide downtown coverage. And earlier last year, we just kept seeing the link go up and down on a, like clockwork. And we were trying to figure out what the heck is going on here. And one of our smart engineers figured out that the new blue bridge is slightly bigger than the old bridge, and when it goes up, it blocks that signal for a while. So we had to move our microwave links from one of our big buildings to an adjoining building. And sometimes that's not easy, getting landlords' approval, and you have to coordinate it with Industry Canada, the federal regulator. So just, yeah, just in a nutshell, really, as cities grow, whether it's roads, sewer water, or even parks, you do need more additional radio infrastructure, and that's why we did the partnership with you folks at your new safety building. So again, thank you. It was a great, that was a great partnership. And I just wanted to know if anybody had any questions about what we're doing, or where we're going, or anything else.
Any questions from the committee? Councilor Rintoul?
Yeah, thank you very much, and thank you, Mr. Horst, for your presentation, Sidney, much appreciated. I know you did some testing on the Sanich Peninsula and I'm assuming Sydney as well. Is there any thoughts around the CSB site? You say it's for future use. Strictly based on development, then, is it, in terms of the need to activate that space?
It typically is developments that's going to drive it, but, you know, you could get environmental factors. I don't want to get too technical, but we decided to use seven hundred megahertz spectrum out on the Sanich Peninsula. And that spectrum is a new public safety spectrum that's been made available to us in the last four or five years. It does quite well on penetrating buildings, and the wavelengths are smaller, so they get into smaller sort of fixtures, and they can get deeper into buildings through concrete, whereas before, we used VHF, very high frequency, and we still use that in the rural area because it travels quite well. But I think we're going, we're seeing it on the testing, but it's pretty about your experience, your police and fire, and your ambulance, how they see it. So in the end of the day, if we're finding some coverage holes and stuff like that, we've got that option to deliver. So we're just, we can move quickly.
Thank you. And if I understood then correctly, currently, Sydney's using the very high frequency signal, then?
Yes.
And as you convert to the seven hundred megahertz, I noticed on the map, the Mount Newton facility is currently transmitting high frequency, but will convert to convert, excuse me, to send signals in the seven hundred megahertz range. Is that correct?
Absolutely. So right now, we're doing both. So you're getting coverage right now, this moment, with VHF. And we'll be doing testing because the system is live but offline, and so we'll test the seven hundred. And then as we bring agencies on, it's seamless from agency talking to, if I'm on the seven hundred system and I'm talking to you in the VHF, the user doesn't know. It's just, it's all behind the scenes. But this time next year, we'll be all on seven hundred throughout the Sanich Peninsula into downtown and out to the west shore. So, and again, it's a cleaner signal. It's all digital, and so there's less background noise because no one else is using it. Right now, VHF, you get taxi drivers, you get commercial, all kinds of folks use VHF, and it's not coordinated particularly well with the Americans, and of course, the border's not very far away, whereas the seven hundred is coordinated. And so we're going to get a better experience, I think, from the users. We're finding that in downtown right now, so.
Yeah, thank you. In terms of resiliency, I take it the equipment is fairly similar in terms of how it needs to be positioned to penetrate, but in terms of a natural disaster, for example, the VHF system is still there as a backup if needed, or how does that work in event of a disaster?
Most of the sites are post-seismic, obviously in your new building. And the way that we design things, there is always two links. So if one link goes down, we've got another redundant link, so there's a secondary. And individual sites can work ideally as part of the network, but if for some reason that link was broken, they can act independently. They're standalone, they've got the smarts within the new system. That wasn't always the case with the old system. So there's a high degree of redundancy, and a lot of reinforcement. Most of our sites have backup generators, and they all have backup UPS systems as well. So they sort of triple, you know, regular power, UPS, and generator. So we're, even in the windstorm last, we didn't lose a single site.
Okay.
Not the old system.
Thank you.
All right.
Any other questions from the committee? Mr. Mayor?
Thank you. Thanks for the presentation, Mr. Horst. It's great to see the progress that's happened over time. And thank you to staff as well for, and to Crest, for coming together on an agreement that brings this infrastructure into place for the future. You spoke about the increase in the number of agencies using the service. That seems like significant growth from over the last ten years when I was previously involved. Are there opportunities for further growth?
We think so. The new system has about thirty percent more capacity, and the master site, if you will, has the ability to handle more sites. We can handle up to about a hundred sites. We'll have about thirty-three when we finish this build-out. So it certainly could progress for more agencies within the region or even outside the region, if that's the direction of the board. The board hasn't made that decision, but that's certainly there, and I think it's possible. So, yeah, we're in good shape to take on new clients, and so utility companies might come on board. You know, we have BC Transit as a heavy user over in Vancouver at Ecom. Transit is, I think it's public that they're in the position of thinking of moving over to Ecom. They had a standalone system, their transit operators over there. I think they're probably going to go to Ecom. I said, I don't think that's a state secret. And they use the same system we do, which is scalable like ours, and it gets them to be able to contact and talk to all their other clients, like police, fire, and ambulance in real time, which is, of course, is one of the hallmarks of Crest here. So, yeah, that's, so I think, which, if we bring more clients in, the theory is, and I think it's truthful, is we'll be able to drive costs down in terms of, on a per-radio basis to our other users. So that's the incentive perhaps for the board, and uniting a broader public safety community at the end of the day, so.
Great. Thank you again.
Is this something that the Canadian forces are also partners in, or do they have their own separate system? And in the event of an emergency, how do we communicate with them through Crest?
No, it's a great question. So CFP, Squamult, the forces, their police and fire departments are on the Crest system, and they have a dispatch center, and that dispatch center backs up Squamult, and Sanich has a backup to those, their fire as well. So there's a high degree of cohesiveness, I guess, to use it. The forces, you know, the men and women who actually fight, do use a different system because it's deployable across Canada, whereas this is just a regional basis. Our radios are usable, though, in those situations, because most of our users have purchased dual-band radios. They can do VHF, which is probably the most common frequency for radio use across Canada, North America, and the new seven hundred, which is set aside for public safety. So, yes, Hazmat team, you know, for the Sanich Peninsula uses our radios. And CFP, Squamult, has operations at Rocky Point in the west shore, too, so they use our radios. And so, yeah, we have a high and a good working relationship with the military.
Anything else from the committee? All right. Thank you very much for the presentation.
Thanks for having me out tonight. Good night.
Okay. Next up on the agenda is under Parks and Infrastructure, a report on the urban forest strategy. And there's a recommendation on that. Oh, presentation first. Yes, thank you. By Evan Peterson of Barefoot Planning. Welcome.
Thank you. Thank you for having me. Yeah, as you already know, I'm here to talk about the urban forest strategy. For those of you that don't know, my name is Evan Peterson, Barefoot Planning and Design, based in, well, on the peninsula. And consulting arborists on this one were Talbot McKenzie Arborists, specifically Graham McKenzie and Michael Maracucci. So they were working closely with me for sort of all the significant technical content. Just what I'm going to run through, rationale for the project, project scope, and the process. Look quickly at the sort of history and existing conditions of the urban forest, engagement process and outcomes from that, touch on the project framework, and then just jump straight into the sort of key implementation strategies. Trust that you guys have at least scanned or flipped through the reports. I'm going to stay out of the weeds of all the recommendations and so on, but happy to answer questions and address those things as needed. So similarly to the last time you saw me, which was the concept designs for those three parks, the urban forest strategy came under a recommendation from the Parks Master Plan to develop a dedicated urban forest strategy to essentially address the long-term management and future of trees and public and private land in Sydney. And if we're going to boil down the objective of the strategy, it's really to develop a clear vision or framework and objectives for the future, and then the policies and actions are going to get us there. So that's pretty high level, but that was the starting point. The focus of this particular urban forest strategy, there's a lot of variation if you look across jurisdictions of their urban forest strategy. Some of them are ninety-nine percent tactical analysis and one percent or less actual implementation strategies and, you know, everything in between. So this is really looking at identifying the key issues, many of which were known and working with the public to identify more, analyzing existing policies and regulations, and then creating a realistic action plan. So there's quite a heavy emphasis on the implementation side and looking at those pieces of the puzzle that we can improve, looking to the future. Limitation was, there wasn't, you know, an exhaustive technical analysis in terms of the biology and so on of the urban forest, but we did have McKenzie to help out for any technical questions that arose. So project process, preliminary analysis, looking at existing conditions, policy, regulations, relevant documents and so on. First round of engagement, which I'll touch on, developed an early draft, come back for a second round of engagement. Throughout that whole process, including developing the final, we had multiple reviews with sort of an internal working group from the operations side and development services side. And also, yeah, surveys and in-person, which I'll touch on. And then iterative development back and forth with staff for the final strategy. So existing conditions of the urban forest in Sydney. So that's a picture of Sydney in nineteen fifty-seven, mill site down foreground here and a lot of agricultural land behind. Not a heck of a lot of urban forest. Sort of some remnant parcel or remnant sections of urban forest back in the background, and I guess that must be around Ray Creek in there. So it's a coastal Douglas fir ecosystem, which is smallest in BC, and it's at risk and rare. The Pasanik peoples really utilize the landscape to cultivate a camusmeadow or garyoaks of Anna in parts of Sydney and much of the peninsula. But for the past hundred and fifty years, since settlers arrived, there was a rapid transition from that sort of natural or culturally modified state to predominantly agriculture and industrial, and now urbanized. So the natural forest was essentially decimated in the late eighteen hundreds and early nineteen hundreds, as most of you are probably aware of the history. So sort of key threats and vulnerabilities to the urban forest, there's more, but here's just sort of the snapshot. One is flat topography and historical uses make it somewhat prime for development, let's say, in agricultural use. And in turn, now it has a highly urbanized development pattern. There's very limited areas of mature forest. We don't have a Mount Doug Park or something of that size and scale to sort of help our stats out a little bit. And also contributes to sort of what we can build on ecologically. We do have small pockets. There's a lack of large mature street trees relative to some comparable small municipalities in Greater Victoria. And, you know, in terms of staff resources and so on, there's not an abundance. On the flip side, key strengths and opportunities, there are some significant ecological areas to build on and work that has been done in the past, whether we're talking around, you know, Ray Creek Park or sort of trying to build off what's happening with the Migratory Bird Sanctuary, both of which are also under threat. Opportunities enhancement in public parks, which touched on the Parks Master Plan and the park concept designs, as well as on private land and institutional lands. There's some large institutional lands that aren't owned by the town, but could be potentially partnered with to expand and enhance urban forest. Similarly, potential community partnerships and volunteerism that could be tapped into a lot more than maybe there is now with regard to ecological management and so on. And despite what I previously said about maybe lack of resources internally, you have a highly coordinated and motivated parks and operations staff that could be tapped into, or tapped into more, let's just say, and expand it upon. So the not-so-pleasant number that comes out of this, and the number, or the stat that is often looked at in urban forest strategy is the tree canopy cover. For Sydney, if we remove the airport lands and remove the four-story area, which is technically within the bounds of the town of Sydney, we're at fourteen point four percent. That's using aerial photography and a GIS-based platform to come to that number. Compare that to some sort of relevant and local-ish examples. Victoria is the most similar in terms of number, as well as in terms of, you know, urban development pattern. And then you sort of go up from there, Colmox and Sanich, obviously assisted by some, you know, just different development pattern, large natural parks and so on, at thirty-eight On that same note, before I sort of move on, the town isn't really presently equipped to increase the tree canopy coverage as much as we'd all like to snap our fingers and say thirty percent by twenty fifty. Trees don't grow that fast, and there's not enough available plantable space. So that's, no matter how we cut it, that's not happening at a rapid rate. You need the actions from this plan, this strategy, to get there over time, and that's was, you know, part of the point that we're, why we're here. And there needs to be greater resource allocation to making that happen. It can't happen just by developing some document itself. So the consultation and outcomes, so we have two rounds, as I noted before, so two public events with two parallel surveys. Mixed in there was a youth engagement, as well as two rounds with operations staff, internal working group sessions throughout, and the Community Association also has a dedicated feedback survey to that, which we plunk, you know, incorporate into our timeline and our process as well. So some solid community engagement. And in terms of what we heard, we heard a lot of different things, but here's just some key takeaways. This is sort of looking at features and things that we would like to aspire to in the long term. So pursuing funding and partnerships, strengthening policy awareness to protect areas near the Migratory Bird Sanctuary, strengthening regulations for loss of trees from development, protecting nesting trees and trees adjacent to those, not just the single tree, prioritizing trees over things like surface parking. And on the flip side, respecting private property rights. There's more, but that's a bit of a snapshot. And then looking at sort of how could we get there? That last slide was a bit of that, but selecting native species and species that will maximize the benefit, sorry, with maximum benefit and habitat creation, ensuring adequate growing conditions. That's a significant issue with suboptimal growing conditions in Sydney because of the soils and space available. So looking to maximize that when we're thinking about planting new trees and so on. Developing a boulevard tree planting plan, something that Opey did, and I can touch on that if necessary. Supporting residents with certain incentives, particularly in the environmental sense of area, ways to encourage them to embrace where they are and embrace the local ecology. Establishing a boulevard tree program, so that's separate than the planting plan, that'd be more like Sanich's plan where you'll get a tree and get it planted for free in exchange for watering it for a certain length of time. And denser plantings in public parks. We have quite a bit of sort of vacant park space, in significant quotation marks there, but areas in which we could have these clusters of urban forest and maybe look at naturalizing some areas in existing public parks, which was touched on in those park concept plans I presented, whenever that was, a couple months ago. So out of the community engagement and that preliminary analysis, we developed a project framework, which really represents the vision, let's say, the vision and objectives. So the main project goals or urban forest goals would be urban forest protection and enhancement. That one's kind of obvious. Beautification and place-making, there's certainly an urban design element to this that needs to be, A, recognize and prioritize, and also B, it integrates with a lot of work that's been done in the past in Sydney, whether it's downtown streetscape guidelines and local area plans and so on. And then finally, making sure we actually have an implementable framework to move forward with, which was sort of the heavy emphasis of this particular plan. Values, this certainly came out of the community engagement. Ecological health and resilience, green infrastructure, so looking at ways beyond just thinking about just trees, but incorporating the urban forest mentality into green infrastructure and stormwater management and so on. Connection and well-being, so how can the natural environment in urban area contribute to, you know, a livable town, well-being of its citizens? Urban design and place-making, already touched on that, and learning and collaboration, plenty of opportunity to build awareness, but also education, collaboration among partners and so on. And then finally, project principles. These are the things that we sort of adhere to as we move through and implement the recommended actions. So commitment and investment, really, there needs to be a sort of ongoing civic and fiscal investment in the urban forest if we want to bring this, the vision to reality. Systems integration, again, looking at beyond just planting trees and walking away, but how can we design streetscapes and onsite development to integrate the urban forest with ecology, stormwater management, and any other food systems, whatever else we can. Future-oriented and adaptive, the climate is changing, and so there needs to be some consideration with regard to irrigation, species selection, whether it's native or adaptive, non-native, the benefits that we can get from prioritizing trees and other plantings. And then finally, back to this actionable and strategic, providing something that will actually happen instead of just nice words. So I'm just going to hit on the high priority items that were in the implementation strategy. And again, I'm happy to come back, but I just don't want to belabor my presentation if you guys have reviewed the strategy itself. The recommendations in the report are broken down to three categories, which somewhat relevant here, first being protection and management, which we're really looking at building on what we have and how do we protect it and manage it better as we move forward. The second one is planting and enhancement, so how do we expand the urban forest? How do we have more trees, better ecological restored areas? And then the final one is stewardship and learning, I want to say. And that's about, you know, those partnerships and opportunities for education, building awareness in the community to support these initiatives and so on. So looking at ongoing actions first, those are things that the town can take on as resources and opportunity arise. Some of them may be in the immediate future, some of them may be now and later, and some of them will just be later as something comes up. So these are just the high priority items, there's quite a few. So these are just the high priority items, there's quite a few. The first one, looking at strengthening policies and reviewing the zoning bylaw, so as the OCP is updated or reviewed, I'm not sure what your preferred term is right now, but then looking to strengthen related, you know, high-level OCP policies, environmentally sensitive area policies, development area policies, and then looking at the zoning bylaw for complementary regulations. Both in terms of the enhancement piece, the management piece, and sort of the, as well, urban design piece, because that's an important, you know, keeping that in our mind as well. Conducting a public tree inventory, that's something that we look to sort of maybe a defined project, but then also something that'd be ongoing over time, identifying what we have more accurately and then be able to map that and track it over time. There's plenty of tools to do that, so it doesn't need to be a huge burden on the town. Reviewing, looking at the tree canopy coverage targets and looking to meet them. The shorter term, the sort of interim tree canopy target before we really understand, A, what exactly is there, and B, what sort of plantable space we have, would be a no-net loss between now and twenty thirty, so roughly a ten-year horizon with a goal of no net loss from the fourteen point four percent. And then once there's been more work done in terms of identifying the existing inventory of trees, looking at plantable space, and really advancing some of those planting plans, then we can become more realistic with regard to setting longer-term goals. The recommended ones here, eighteen percent by twenty forty and twenty-five percent by twenty seventy. Trees take a while to grow, and that's based on, that's a high-level, rough target for now, and then hopefully that can be refined more accurately and realistically, but still aspirational as more information is provided to the town as they move through this strategy. The second, or sorry, fourth one, is utilizing local park planning and local area planning. As already mentioned, there are parks in the town, as seen with, you know, Breathour and Resthaven and Rathdown, that have opportunity to expand on the, you know, ecological health as well as the urban forest, or I should say, the tree canopy coverage in the town of Sydney. And also with the local area plans, there's an opportunity to look at area-based tree canopy targets. Some areas are going to be more conducive to expanding and enhancing the tree canopy and ecological health than others, and also some streetscapes and so on, and road right-of-way widths, and all that will be more amenable to some strategies and others. So those can be tackled on an area-by-area basis. Improving development review processes, so that's looking to basically beef up both the policy as well as the internal staff processes for reviewing planting plans on, as development proposals come forward, ensure that there's adequate growing conditions, that replacement trees are being either planted on-site or that the right steps are being taken so that they're in the same neighborhood, and improving that whole process as development comes forward. And finally, internal and external funding, that's something that's obviously going to be ongoing. There's plenty of opportunities to support tree planting programs from other sources, and also internally, talk about resource allocation and so on. Short-term actions, again, these are just the high priority ones. You know, you can be over-actioned and over-strateged, so trying to focus on the higher priority ones, the ones that would be most likely to be carried forward in hopefully the not-too-distant future. A tree planting plan, so once there's an inventory conducted, essentially doing a, coming up with a number, I don't know what that number is, let's just say five is a ballpark, of block typologies of what the plantings would look like on a particular block, and then applying those across the town where they're most appropriate. So there might be one for down, you know, Beacon, and maybe another one for other downtown blocks, and then maybe one for single-family zones and so on, in order to improve the growing conditions, look at opportunities for green infrastructure, look at opportunities for complementary plantings and so on. Second one is developing a tree species list and related guidelines. Right now, staff uses Sandwiches as sort of the default, nothing wrong with that, but looking to just tailor something for the town of Sydney and moving forward with that. Tree preservation bylaw update, that's pretty significant. As you'll see in the strategy, there's a table that proposes an alternative replacement ratio rates, as well as requiring replacement trees for trees within the footprint of a proposed building. And we can touch on that more if necessary. Looking at, this is similar to the Parks Master Plan, but looking at internal staff and resources review. So again, if we want to achieve urban forest goals and enhance it, there's going to have to be an enhancement of resources put towards it. Boulevard maintenance, again, this is just looking at tree health. Whose responsibility is it, how are we ensuring that newly planted trees are reaching maturity in a healthy and resilient way? And then finally, related communications campaign to just raise public awareness about what's going on, what the town's investing in, what the key initiatives are, what the benefit is to the town and taxpayers and so on. And then I don't have it broken out to medium, long-term, because I think that is sometimes silly depending on the project, so this is just general longer-term. Boulevard tree program, so that, again, I've already touched on that, that'd be something analogous to the Sandwich program. And then development requirements, so this is something I would see potentially coming through the local area plans, or maybe even the OCP review, which could be looking at onsite requirements to improve the ecological integrity of development sites. So whether that was, you know, a minimum impervious area, or, sorry, maximum impervious area, or a minimum tree canopy coverage, or things like that in order to essentially have requirements or contribute to the urban forest over time. That's my review. Happy to take questions.
Thank you for the presentation. Committee members, is there any questions? Counselor Fallon?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Thank you, Mr. Peterson, for this work, I appreciate it, and I'm glad we've got this now in front of us. Couple of questions, as the practicality, I appreciate you're not an arborist, you're not a horticulturist, but if we start planting trees in, with, looking at the densification that we have in Sydney, recognizing that root systems stretch out minimum to where the branch level of the tree is, how do we, and if we're talking boulevard trees, what happens now between the hard surface of the sidewalk and the road, the life and the health of the tree and the survivability? Is that something you feel comfortable answering, or?
Well, yes, I mean, that's really the purpose of the, those two, the two biggest projects out of this would be the inventory piece, which looks at plantable space as well as what you have in terms of existing trees, and then the planting plan. And the purpose of that is essentially to say, we can't just come out of this project and say, well, let's just plant trees everywhere for that very reason, we have to have a better understanding of where there is adequate growing conditions on public property and what trees would be suitable in those locations, which this project did not have the budget or scope or timeline to address that. And that's also why we have the no-net loss as the sort of short-term target, because to figure out where we're going a little bit more clearly. Similarly, there's other recommendations in here with regard to making sure that we're working with Fortis and BC Hydro and looking at our own underground works to ensure that there's intelligent planning with regard to new works and the impacts that they might have on the ability to have those tree plantings, as well as the appropriate species selection with regard to, some species obviously have larger, more invasive root structures than others. So there's quite a bit of thought that's going to need to go into, in particular, on-street plantings, because it's, you know, we're almost in a retrofit situation relative to some communities, not for all of Sydney, but for a good chunk of it. So I don't have an answer, there's no one-off answer, but that's why those two big pieces need to come into play.
Yeah, I appreciate that, because it is an important point that we have to look at. And you also addressed in the report, climate change, and then you were talking about indigenous species. Well, we have to be careful with that, of course, because our climate is changing, and what may have been something that has been typical here for two hundred years and more is not necessarily something that, moving forward, is going to survive. I was disappointed to see that we're looking at a modest eleven percent increase over a fifty-year span, I sort of thought, but I appreciate looking at all those nuances of how to pick places where we do plant the trees and what we plant. It's going to take a while, but I think it's utmost importance that we're very conscientious and do this properly. I don't want to just plant trees for the purpose of filling in a quota and then not having their survivability. So one of the points that you've brought up in there is when there's a building permit and a planting permit, that there is a two-year period before it gets signed off. And I think that's a good move, so thank you very much.
Thank you.
Counselor Garnett?
Thank you, Mr. Peterson, great report, enjoyed reading it. I have some comments, but I think I'll leave that for discussion later, if that's okay. But one question I have for you is, you were talking about education, and I agree, if you walk around the community, there's English ivy on a great many trees, and I'm wondering what you envision as a way of educating the public that we really need to nip that in the bud and not let it take a hold so that it actually damages the tree?
The invasive species one, and English ivy in particular is challenging. I think that there's a few different routes that you could potentially go with that. One is just strictly an awareness campaign where you're, you know, you're identifying the importance of the, you know, Albe Road area or Wilford Grove, and trying to engage directly with those residents and, you know, just encourage them. Then another similar one would be to try to organize with some, the community association or community groups to try to get a group of volunteers, including those landowners, to take part in, you know, ivy polling parties. And if the landowners aren't keen, then ask them if they'd give us permission, you know, give you permission to come on their property and poll ivy. I mean, these things, these happen, these things happen. And I've even seen it in some municipalities where the staff themselves will come on to the property and, you know, with permission, and take care of things like that. So it depends on what, how far we want to go and how bad, you know, how significant the problem is, and I think it would have to be taken on an area-by-area or case-by-case basis with your operations staff, because they'll know, you know, these guys know every tree. But one, you know, probably a combination of what I just said, starting with the, you know, least intrusive and going from there.
Anybody else? Mayor Neil Smith?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Thank you for the excellent report. I have a few questions, and I'll try and gather them into separate questions here, but the first is with regards to measurement. So do we only have this reference point of the measurement currently taken, a fourteen and some percent, or do we have a reference point further back in time for the, for our municipality?
We don't have one further back, but we could get one. Yes. Well, it was, you know, it would take a bit of effort, and if the budget was there, we could have done it, because you're essentially taking a current aerial photograph using Google Maps, and then it's giving you eight hundred random points, and you basically say, yes, that's a tree, or no, that's not a tree, until the standard deviation potential is insignificant. So we could find a way to, or find a platform that would allow us to do that with older aerial photography. But we, the one that we used, which was free, did not have that option, and so we'd have to just find an analogous way. So it wouldn't be terribly difficult, but we don't have it right now.
Okay, well, it's, moving forward, it's nice to have the reference point we have today to go forward in the targets. Is it challenging time-wise, expense-wise, to measure it on an annual basis, every five years? Is there a plan for that?
Using the same technique, it's not hard at all. You know, it's going to, it will take maximum a few hours of staff time. As I look over to your back.
Thank you. And I'd like to talk a little bit about no-net loss. So you've mentioned in the report, and kudos to staff, they've planted some three hundred trees over the last five years, but it makes me think if we've been in a holding pattern for the last five years while staff have planted three hundred trees, what is the loss come from predominantly? Has it come from, it doesn't come just from development, it must come from other, from a range of factors?
Yes, it comes from a range of factors, but you're essentially trading larger trees for smaller trees, so less larger trees for more smaller trees, and as a result, you're trading water, if that makes sense. So if you're taking down some mature trees through development or through windfall, or through age and disease, or through works, public works, and you're replacing them with, you know, immature trees, then you're going to have to plant several to make up the equivalent canopy. So even if it's three hundred new young trees, it doesn't take that many mature trees to have the similar canopy coverage. So that's essentially what we're dealing with, and that's why the no-net loss proposal, because we're assuming that through wind events and development, that there's going to be more mature trees that will come down over the next eleven years. And so hopefully, through planting, we'll at least match that. And then in time, as those trees grow, and as more planting occurs, then that's when you'll start to get the increases in canopy coverage.
It seems like a lot of our efforts, I mean, the windstorm was so significant, I mean, we experienced it individually as residents, you know, on our own properties, but certainly the staff report and the significance of some of the mature trees that came down, kind of could wipe out your gains in a short period of time. The, in your report, you mention, by way of numbers, the city of Duncan, and they happen to have set a particular target of forty percent, and you talk about them having to plant thirty-seven, some thirty-seven hundred trees to reach that target, but it's really a combination of the number of trees and the growth of the existing tree canopy over time?
Yes, I mean, that's part of that inventory, which is if you knew how many young trees that you had planted in areas where there's adequate growing conditions, then you could put some money on that those were going to grow to such and such a size. And through the inventory and a planting plan, you could come up with some numbers of how many trees you're hoping to plant. I think the one thing that I would add here would be the stats of how, the canopy coverage as well as how many trees are planted, has importance because it is a marker, but we should also be thinking about the overall ecological health of not only just the urban forest per se, but of all ecological elements of Sydney. So even if Sydney doesn't hit the leaderboard of the canopy coverage, that's not to say that you can't have, you know, healthier stormwater systems, you know, Ray Creek could be thriving, you know, Mermaid Creek and so on, and the Bird Sanctuary. You could focus on things beyond just increasing that number, though that is a good proxy, and obviously something that you want to do, there's all these other elements that we, I don't think we want to lose sight of either.
Two more questions. One is, you mentioned in your report, and a couple of times in verbal report, the impervious materials or soil or structures, pavement and so on. How critical is that to the ecology of the canopy, I mean, when you think of the community as a whole?
Sydney's, I mean, if you're talking about how significant is it in just Sydney, it's fairly significant, because you have a very urbanized development pattern, just the nature of, it's small, it's flat, and it's desirable, and it has been for a long time, and so a lot of areas taken up by building or street or sidewalk and so on. If you're, I refer to effective impervious area in there, and that's essentially what percentage of the site drains the conventional stormwater system, so rather than into the ground. And that has fairly significant, depending on the soil conditions and what's around the site and so on, that can have pretty significant impacts on the long-term health of those trees on that site and the adjacent sites. So, you know, then we started getting the conversation about how important is surface or even underground parking to us relative to trees? And how important is it to, you know, ensure people don't have double-wide driveways when they don't need them? You know, or driveways mounted of concrete or ash You know, or driveways mounted of concrete asphalt rather than gravel? You know, there's, there's a lot of trade-offs that can start being talked about when you, when you're looking at those sorts of measures.
So, I mean, it's going to, it's going to affect the survivability of the
Absolutely, yeah.
Of the trees. Last question is with regards to carbon sequestration. You mentioned it in the report. If, again, we're talking about a percentage basis for Sydney, but if, if Sydney was to increase from, from 15 to 20%, in Sydney's case, given its land area, is that a significant difference in carbon sequestration or, I don't know magnitudes. I don't get, I don't get a sense of magnitude.
I didn't address that in terms of any technical analysis. But, you know, in terms of microclimates and impacts as regard to air quality and so on, that, I mean, we said, Counselor Fallett mentioned 11% increase. It's actually almost 100% increase because you're going from, you're almost doubling the percentage that you have in terms of relative, relative totals. So, it would be significant if you just think about having twice as many trees as you have now. You would feel it in probably more ways than one. I don't have any numbers with regard to, you know, quantity of CO2 that would be sequestered because of that. I don't think it would be that hard to find those numbers, though.
No, thank you very much.
Anything else?
I have a couple of questions. So, I read the report and very, very interesting. Thank you. One of the things that I noted was although there was mention of climate change, I didn't see it noted as a threat, as a specific threat in the, when you did that analysis of the threats. And I, when I looked at urban forest strategies for Victoria and other municipalities across the country, that seemed the one thing that they all sort of zeroed in on and mentioned. And I thought it was important because I'm, I'm not very literate on the subject. But because they identified it as a threat, they also identified a lot of other things as part of their action plan in order to address the issue of urban forests. So, things that they commented on were things like, you know, we can expect different growing cycles for different types of trees or that there's going to be more insects and diseases. And so, that led to the implementation in some places of early detection sort of programs. And so, I was wondering if you had the opportunity to consult, I know you had some arborists on the team, whether you had the opportunity to look at any other additional resources or subject matter expertise specifically about climate change and impact?
Well, yes. Short answer. You'll see in that same section of the report, there's a full call-out box about best practices around climate change. The not having it in the threats would just be pure oversight, probably because we got put over into that other call-out box. So, that could be something that could be easily added to the report. In terms of, well, a couple of comments. One would be, I don't think that says anything about the lack of importance of its inclusion in our overall thinking or in my thinking. Part of it's just in the scope and the fairly limited scope or focus, I should say, of this urban forest strategy. I don't know if you read all of Victoria's urban forest strategy. It's excellent in terms of that sort, that sort of thing. It also spends about 95 pages talking about that stuff. And the main action is you should do a urban forest action plan. And there's, that's, that's the main takeaway. So, you know, there was a certain trade-off with this process and perhaps more detail about those sorts of considerations was one of the limitations.
Thank you. And I guess sort of related to that in terms of our, our capacity and our ability to, to address some of those specific things like pests or different types of growing cycles, things like throughout the report, it talks about recommendation to promote the use of native trees. And so, do we have information about how well our native trees are expected to, to fare over the next several years in terms of climate change? Or Douglas fir is still going to be, you know, compatible in the future with hotter temperatures and less rain?
I think a lot of that information is coming to us right now. Like we're seeing die-off of Western red cedar in a lot of parts of the province. One of the reasons that maybe that isn't a huge loss from the report is that we're just going to have to, when we go through the inventory and go through the planting plans, park staff, they're, they're very, very knowledgeable about this stuff. And the reason why it's sort of the catch-all of focus on native and adaptive non-native is essentially that the future is going to tell us in terms of where the focus should be. And if it, through the planting plan, I would suspect that that would be one of the focuses there would be what species and combinations of species in terms of understory and so on are going to give these trees the best chance of surviving and thriving in the future. But going to that extent beyond what is provided was outside the scope of what I, what I looked at. Needless to say, the, you know, the changing growing seasons and so on, there's only so far we can go with that with regard to this document beyond, we're going to, you know, more resources and looking at ways to talk about the impervious surface, you know, just increasing groundwater infiltration and so on, things that are going to help deal with water shortages, longer, drier summers, shorter weather winters, all that, all that sort of stuff.
Good, thank you. Anything else from the committee? All right. Well, thank you very much for that. Okay, moving on under development and planning.
I have to move the recommendation.
Oh, yeah, sorry. Thanks, you guys. Recommendation.
I'll move the staff recommendation that one, the urban forest strategy report by Barefoot Consulting dated June 11th, 2019 be received. And two, that staff analyze the action items from the strategy and bring forward potential projects for consideration as part of annual fall strategic planning and subsequent budget process.
Discussion? Counselor Duncan?
Thank you, Chair. Going through it, I, I didn't have any questions that nobody else on the committee already brought up. That was excellent. I think I shared Counselor Fallett's initial thought that I think people would be disappointed by the no net loss in the first 10 years. People in the community who are really passionate about our trees. So, I'm glad there was discussion on that, that it doesn't mean we stop planting trees and lots of trees, that they are much smaller than a lot of the mature ones that are coming down. So, that as those trees grow, you know, the canopy coverage should start, replacement should start accelerating. So, there is some light at the end of that tunnel. When I look at this, I see that definitely I would like to try to make this a higher priority for freeing up resources in the fall when we do strategic planning, just knowing that it is, climate change is a threat and planting more trees will be one of the cheaper adaptation items that we can do for helping with stormwater mitigation and the heat effects that we're going to be seeing, I think, especially in this urban environment with many elderly people. But I also see that keeping those trees alive might be a bit of a problem without a lot of community involvement. The amount of staff time it will take to probably keep those trees watered through our summers is going to be exponentially increasing. So, I think one of the medium priorities that was identified was community interaction. I think that will be something that before we can really get a handle on what kind of town resources we can put to it, we're going to need to know what kind of community resources that we can count on and what kind of taste there is for people actually doing, adopt a tree. Because I don't know how else we're going to do it. That's what we have coming. So, thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Garnett?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Just a few points. You were bringing up the Boulevard trees and I, when you were talking about Boulevard trees, I couldn't help but think of that section as you come out of Mount Dog Park on Shelburne and just how amazingly beautiful it is and actually quite calming. So, a lot of the comments you made in the report, I'm like, it just hearkened me back to driving that area. And I thought, man, that would be beautiful on Beacon Avenue if it was a viable option. I also love the idea of an Arbor Day celebration. And when I first read this without actually reading the report, reading the thing, thinking, oh, what a great way to get people to volunteer to help plant trees. And then, of course, it's in there after. Like, yeah, and that actually saves, saves a bit of money in terms of staff resources. You have somebody like Cliff Halliday out there supervising to make sure it's done properly. And I think that's something the community would really get, would really rally around. And that's another way to promote extra trees being planted. Your mention about development and native trees and the fact that, and it was something as a citizen before I got into this, I noticed a lot of the developments were, they're replacing mature trees with ornamental trees. And I'm thinking, I remember thinking at that time, is that really the way to go? And so, I love the fact you touched on that in here. And I also was thinking about how when we have one protected species tree come down in development, they're required to plant two. And I thought, should we up that to three or four, something for discussion in the fall again? I'm thinking maybe we need to up that in terms of what we're replacing it with. In terms of the cost factor, I just look at it as an investment in a healthy future for our community. And, you know, and if you're going to spend money, that's a pretty important area. Otherwise, you know, you can spend money on other things. But without trees, without sustainability in our community, you know, it's, some of that money is just wasted. Whereas this money is actually something that we're going to see something come to fruition out of. And like my fellow counselors here mentioned, and I know in terms of growth and timing and cost and everything, given that we've talked about a climate change emergency in the past, I would love to see those numbers, be a little more ambitious in our numbers if it's at all possible than 18 and 25%. I don't know if we can get there, but I hope so through our planning that we can, those numbers and percentages can actually be increased. Just because I think it's, we're at a point where it's something we really need to think long and hard about trying to get the maximum out of it. So, but in the end, I really appreciate your report and I thought it was well done. So, thank you.
Counselor Fallett?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I will echo Counselor Duncan's comments regarding the adopt a tree. I think we do need to look at community engagement and, and almost a sense of responsibility to, to what is happening. And certainly within the report, it also touched on our staff resources, both in the park staff itself and the fact that we have one arborist. And if we are going to seriously undertake an increase in our urban forest and how we manage our parks, we're going to have to face the fact that that is going to have impacts to our budget. And then one of the other things that came out in the report was the English ivy situation. And I know a few weeks back, having taken a walk through Ray Creek with some staff members and other members of council, and one of the things that was obvious there was the amount of ivy that's there. So, before we go full bore into adding our tree, to our trees, I think it's also imperative that we ensure that the trees that we already have, that we enable them to, to have a healthy life. And so, I think we, we need to have a program to deal with the ivy because those trees that are going to be impacted are actually our big trees. And, and that, that is a significant loss. So, whether we plant two to one or five to one, we do need to protect what we've got. And I think that needs to have a high priority in our, in our planning of what we do is we need to protect that. So, thank you. Other comments? Okay. Go ahead, Counselor Garnett.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Just one last thing. You touched on it, and there was a Victoria Green Team initiative, which I took part in a few weeks ago at the end of Third Street, pulling ivy out of, and it was very successful. We had a good, a good turnout and got a lot done in just a short time. So, that's something, hopefully, we can partner with groups in the community and moving forward do that because, I mean, little hands make, or many hands make little work, right? So, if we all realize how important it is, as Counselor Fallett said, and I've walked around the community a lot, and there is a lot of English ivy. And, you know, it does take a bit of effort and it's a bit of back strain, but, you know, the gain is, far outweighs that. So, I think that's something that, you know, we should really pursue, and I think it's an excellent idea. Thanks.
Thank you, Chair. I was actually just jogged my memory asking about tree species this weekend. I learned that apparently the province has largely finished a plan where they have been collecting seed and looking and kind of coming up with a list of species that they think are going to be moving north or being more viable in this province over the coming decades. And apparently it's primarily for forestry, of course, and replanting and forestry blocks. But they have this list of species and what they're suited for. And if you order the seed, you kind of know what you're looking for. You can order the seed and get them growing it. So, it's kind of a program we can look at. And that might be something that we could access through this vegetation, I think it's the Vegetation Management Strategy, the grant the Highlands is leading. We received a letter about it, I think, back in March. And I think this was one of the things that they were looking at was being able to take these seeds and this list that the province has come up with and being able to start pilot projects around here. And again, they're, they're more forestry-based, which is why Highlands and I think Machozen and some of them are much more highly-forested municipalities are looking at it. But in theory, the more municipalities that join, the more money might be available. And one of the identified actions on here was to actually have pilot projects. So, it could be something to look into about whether joining and, and being able to get some benefit from that might be worth our while as one of our action plans. I think the application goes in in the fall, so we might be able to sneak in there after our strategic planning.
Thank you. I guess I've got a few comments. So, building on Counselor Duncan's comments about the resources available, and I guess comment or maybe question to staff, in terms of whether we think we need to allocate resources to, to staff education or to get access to resources, just some poking about, there's, you know, I came across a compendium of best urban forest management practices that's available through treecanada.ca. There seems to be a lot of research and resources available that highlight some specific things that local governments can do. I think it's important as we move forward with, with strategies to make sure that, I think we're going to need to do more than just plant more trees and just use more water to, for those trees. It seems like we need to do some research to find out what are the trees that are going to survive in this new climate. As Counselor Duncan said, there's, you know, evidence that a lot of our current species are going to start moving north. And we're going to start seeing other species that are more commonly from the south moving into our area. So, so helping staff if, get that knowledge and expertise if it's not there already might be something we want to incorporate into our action plan. Another thing, I guess, in terms of, you know, resources, it's mentioned many times about the need to dedicate resources and more money to this. And I guess my thinking always is before going for more money, are there ways of doing things differently? So, for example, I, I'm recalling that when we did our, our budget review, I think, there was mention that there was more expenditure this past year because we had to spend more, more on water because it was, it was hotter. And drought conditions, we know that's going to improve or increase in the future. So, I guess I'm thinking about things like, you know, looking at, are there ways that we can make efficiencies in how we're currently operating? So, instead of having certain sort of plants, are we maybe looking at more drought-resistant? Although I love all those beautiful annuals that are in front here and they're colorful, you know, maybe the town could set an example by having more zariscapes sort of landscaping different parts of the town. And I know that those things aren't necessarily related to forests, but it's to me part of the same budget. So, if we can save money or make efficiencies somewhere, that we can then use those resources in terms of the, our urban forest planning, planning. And I guess the other thing I was thinking is that, again, talking about our climate action plan that we've deferred since 2021. I was looking at that plan, and although it's almost 10 years old, I didn't see anything in there that related to, to this. And there didn't seem to be anything that addressed our natural assets. And so, when I looked at the CRDs, Climate Action Plan, there's a specific goals in there in terms of retaining and expanding our natural assets like our in there in terms of retaining and expanding our natural assets, like our forests. And so, I know that we're not planning to look at our action plan until 2021, but it seems to me that maybe when staff are coming forward with a plan on how we're going to approach our urban forests and our parks, it seems to me that maybe we could design that, so it's something that could be just plugged into. Here's, here's something that's going to support our climate action plan, a component of that. So, just for consideration. And I think that's it, that's it for me. Any other comments from the committee? All right. Call the question. Thank you. All in favor? Motion carried. Okay. Now we can move on to development and planning. And we have a request for a development permit, variance permit at 10326 Menog Place. And we have the applicant, Mr. Andrew Bradley, here to make a presentation. So, welcome. So, just press the little button there to light up the mic.
All right. Okay. We'd like to thank the mayor and council members for letting us to stand up for you to put forward our rationale for asking for a variance. I'd just like to say that we've built this building in our backyard, because we have a small home-based business, and it's growing like crazy. And we bought it three years ago, and we quickly realized that we needed to expand out of the basement into a building of some sort. And we're not in the position at the moment of renting commercial space. So, we applied for the permit, and we tried to do this right. And my mistake was that when we measured the space that the building is supposed to be from the property line, I unfortunately measured from the fence, which is not the case where the property is. It's, we're fifteen inches inside of the offset, I guess you'd call it, setback from the property line. So, we applied for the permit anyway. And not knowing this, we went ahead and we started construction. And we got to the point where we needed our first inspection. And at the time, there was a different inspector who's now left, he's gone to Victoria. And he came out, and he was quite happy with what was going on, except that he suggested that we should probably look at getting a survey at some stage. And the way it was presented to me was that it was more of a formality than anything else, but, you know, at some stage, get the survey. Now, the time that it went between this situation and the second time they come out was a matter of months. And I'd forgotten all about getting a survey anyway, and it didn't appear to be a big deal. And we got to the point where we had built the framework and put a roof on it. And he came out for his second inspection, and there were some issues, and he came out a couple of times just to fix the issues, and passed us on the second one. He failed us on the first one, passed us on the second one. And I kind of sort of took that as, well, we're okay, we're moving forward. And nothing really happened for another eight months or so, I guess, till we got to the point where the town called us up in the last couple of months and said they wanted to close the file, and because it had, the permit had expired. And I hadn't any idea that permits expire, but apparently they do. So, I asked what's required, and he said, well, you need a survey, and you need your final inspection. So, I said, no problem. We went and got the survey. And that's when all hell broke loose. We got the survey, and we presented it to the town. And they told us that we were in violation of the bylaw, the setback, and we were fifteen inches in. So, I invited both the inspectors to come out and have a look at the situation, and give us some recommendations, tell us what our choices were, what we could do to fix this. And two of them were to physically move the building, which is 25 feet long and 10 feet wide, and it's sitting on a concrete pad, or to cut the back of the building off, which is, well, that's a bit ridiculous, to cut the back of a building off just to make it skinnier, or to apply for a variance. So, we said, well, we need to go the easiest route first, and do our due diligence. So, we applied for the variance. Our rationale here is, is three points that we'd like to make, and that's that, we've never built a building before. We're not builders, we're not in construction. This is a whole new project for us. And we needed a lot of guidance and a lot of advice, and some of that had to come from the town, and some of it came from contractors. And we tried to do everything right. But the mistake I made was building it from the fence, as I mentioned, and not from the property line, which I didn't quite understand, but that's the way it is, I guess. And we've got to the point now where, the three points that I want to bring forward is that, if the inspector failed us on the first inspection, but passed us on the second one, that the message there to me was that we were on the right track, and that you were able to keep building, and that there was no stop work order put on the building, and there was no discussion about you can't move any forward without the risk of this happening, and the consequences would be that you may have to actually physically move the building. So, that's our first rationale, is that, you know, we were hoping for a bit more guidance from the town. Our second rationale is that physically moving a building or cutting the back of the building off is thousands of dollars in cost, as opposed to applying for a variance, which is going to be the easiest way around it, of course. And we're more than happy to work with the town to make sure that the side of the building is fireproofed, because that's the third rationale here, is that we understand that an offset is put in place to protect our neighbor's building from primarily fire, I'm assuming. And we've spoken to our neighbor about the situation. He doesn't see a problem with it, because his building is seventeen and a half feet from our building. So, I don't think fifteen inches is going to make a difference to him in case of fire or earthquake or whatever the situation might be. But he doesn't deem it an issue, and he's signed a little letter, and I have that, and I've, I think you all have that as well, showing that it's not an issue. But, as I said, our third rationale is that, is that we don't feel that the building really is any kind of a risk at all. We've done our best under the conditions, under the situation, to make it worthwhile. And we're more than happy to work with the town to make sure that we fireproof that side of the building in the event that we do get the variance. The only other thing I can say is that if, if for some reason we're not granted a variance, I think maybe in future, that the town perhaps should make sure that a stop work order is put in place for any future Sydney residents who want to go through this process, and make sure that they understand that moving forward is at their own risk. Because I wouldn't have moved forward had I known that this was going to be the situation that it is. So, yeah, basically, that's my rationale for asking for a variance. Is there any questions?
Okay. Any questions from members of the committee? Councillor Rintul?
Thanks, Madam Chair. Mr. Bradley, when the first site inspection took place, what stage were you at in the project?
We had cribbed, and we'd cribbed, and we had put in rebar, and we were about to pour concrete the next, well, next couple of days, actually. He came just in time.
And at that point, he'd indicated, from your letter and from your comments, that a survey or a building location certificate was, was, a requirement or advisable? What was your?
Well, he was more advisable, he suggested, and that's why it was put to me. It was more like, I felt this was more like a, what's the word I'm looking for, a formality than anything else, because I had measured the distance from the fence, thinking this wasn't going to be a big deal, when in fact, the fence had actually been built within my neighbor's property, and his property extends fifteen inches past the fence, which I didn't know at the time. So...
Okay.
And it wasn't mentioned in the second inspection either.
Same building inspector?
Yes, absolutely.
Thank you.
Other questions? So, I have one. So, the second inspection, so how far along were you when he came for the second inspection?
The second inspection, we had framed the building, put the roof on, or I should say, at least the framing for the roof. There were a few issues that we needed to address. He had to come back again to have a look at it, and we'd fixed the issues and started, not cladding the building, but putting the plywood on the outside of the building. And it didn't seem to be a problem then. There was no issues, he said, you're fine to keep moving forward. And there was no mention of a survey.
So, the issues that he brought up, that you had to fix, they were related more to the structure?
That's right.
Or design of the building?
We, I've never built a building before, and this building is 10 feet at the front, eight foot at the back. And what we did is we built a two-foot pony wall on top of the eight-foot wall, and secured it that way. And that's not strong enough in an earthquake environment, or a risk to an earthquake environment. And as he vibrated the wall, it basically gave a hinging point. So, he suggested ways of fixing it, which we did. So, we fixed the wall, so it's not an issue anymore. But that was really the only problem that he mentioned.
Okay. So, he didn't say, hey, I noticed I don't have this survey from you yet?
No.
And you need to stop work?
No, there was no mention of a survey whatsoever. As I said, I felt this is more like a formality than anything else. And this wasn't a big deal, because I'd measured the distance from the fence, and not the, not the actual property line. So, yeah.
Okay, understood. Other questions? Councillor Rintul?
So, beg your pardon. Thank you. I beg your, what changed then, that, on the third visit, I think it was, that the building inspector expressed some concern with regard to the location?
No, there was no, the building inspector never mentioned any concern about the location of it, except on the very first one, where he said at some stage, you should probably get a survey, because it seemed close. But the whole issue didn't come about until, oh, I don't know, February, March of this year, when?
When your permit expired.
When our permit expired. And it was mentioned that in order to close the file on the building permit?
Right.
That we needed a final inspection, and we needed the survey, which I said, no problem. So, I went and got the survey, and that's where the problem arose. And he said, well, you, the town said you're fifteen inches too close. And that's going to be a big deal, because we'd done the best we can building this building, as strong as we could, sitting on a concrete pad. So, if we're going to move the building, we actually have to build another fifteen inches of concrete in front of that, which means, yeah, we have to lift the building off the, yeah, you know how it goes, right? And it's bolted into the concrete already.
And removes the fifteen inches from the back.
And then probably have to remove, although the inspector didn't say, you, that's a bit of a question as to whether we do that or not. It's probably prudent, so that the water that may fall on that concrete doesn't be, isn't absorbed through the frame. But I've spoken to a number of contractors about it, and there are ways around it, by just simply sealing it properly. We can cut the back of the concrete off, that's a huge undertaking itself, too. And then the other problem with moving the building, if we have to, is that it's not sitting on the thickest part of the slab anymore, because the slab is shaped like that, and the edge of the building is sitting on the thickest part, and it thins out in the middle. So, if we move it, we're not on the strongest part of the pad anymore. So, that's a problem. So...
Okay. Any other questions? Okay, that's fine. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
So then, before the discussion begins, I'll recuse myself. The Bradford's live across the street from me, and I don't want to just have, just to keep the public perception about the influence my vote could have on the discussion. So, thank you, councillor Duncan.
So, we have a recommendation from staff on this variance. Look to the committee for...
I'll move the recommendation for discussion purposes. That the accessory structure on the property at 10326 Menog Place be brought into conformance with zoning by law number 2015, or else be removed.
Second.
All right, discussion? Yes, councillor Rintul?
Thank you, Madam Chair. To staff, if I may, with respect to the request for the survey, a conclusion, or presumed conclusion of the project, is that a normal course of action in this process, or should it have been called for on the first site visit?
Through the chair to councillor Rintul, a survey is required when a new building is being built. Section 2.1.5 of the town's Building Bylaw 2016 requires that every owner shall provide to the building official a survey of the building foundation by a British Columbia Land Surveyor after the foundation is completed and prior to framing inspection. The building official may waive this requirement for accessory buildings or structures when it is deemed that setbacks and lot coverage are not an issue. So, the bylaw does allow an exception for accessory buildings. It sounds like in this case, the building inspector did request it. It should have come in prior to a framing inspection. Occasionally, when the builder or the applicant indicates that it's coming, they're working on it, the building inspector will keep doing inspections. But we do require that it come in before the project is finalized, before the final inspection.
Thank you. And so, in this case, on the second inspection, what in the notes or in your understanding has occurred that one wasn't presented or provided, and the project permitted to move forward?
Again, through the chair to councillor Rintul, I can't speak to what the building inspector's thoughts were at the time I wasn't present on the inspection. That inspector's no longer with the town. In terms of why they let it go forward and didn't mention it again, perhaps that building official thought that since they had mentioned it once, and the applicant acknowledged the request, that they didn't have to repeat it. That's my speculation, though.
Yeah, thank you. Through to staff as well, if I may, are applicants provided with a checklist of sorts? Is there some sort of simple way for individuals to sort of tick the boxes to make sure they're following the steps that are required when a permit of this nature is issued?
Yes, that's usually attached to the building permit when it's issued. And the applicant does have to sign the building permit to acknowledge the conditions on it when they're paying for the permit and picking it up. That's the time that we consider is issuing the building permit, is when they sign it and pay for it and pick it up.
And because this was an accessory building, and you referenced the bylaw, I'm sorry, I don't recall the precise wording you stated there, but it sounded somewhat discretionary, the wording in this instance, because it's an accessory building? Is that correct?
Yes, the bylaw is discretionary for accessory buildings, in terms of requiring that foundation survey. It sounds like the building official did request it, because it was proposed to be constructed at the minimum setback to the property line.
I'll leave it there. I'm not sure I'm finished, but I'll leave it there. Thanks.
Councillor Wainwright?
Thank you, Madam Chair. This one is a challenging thing to make a decision about. Whenever we make a decision about a variance, one always has to think about the precedents one is setting. And particularly, where we're dealing with a situation of, of an after-the-fact request for a variance, because over my time as a councillor, I've seen, I guess, several occasions where a builder or developer has done something contrary to what the approval authorized them to do, and asked for a variance after the fact. And I guess, one of the key considerations is whether they ignored the conditions of the approval, and, for whatever reason, or whether it was an inadvertent mistake. And there have been some occasions where it was something inadvertent. This seems to be one of those occasions where you did your measurements from the fence, not knowing that the fence and the property line frequently do not align. Usually, the fence is on somebody's property, not like literally right on the line. If you'd actually read the bylaw carefully, you probably have recognized that the inspector... If you'd actually read the bylaw carefully, you probably have recognized that the inspector has the discretion to require the survey or not. I don't know what the paperwork actually showed, you know, what you may have signed about, you know, acknowledging that a survey was required or not. So this is one, and particularly with the building inspector involved no longer being on our staff, we can't really ask the inspector for his side of the story, or her side of the story, as the case may be. So this one makes it tough. Generally, I lean towards not authorizing something after the fact, because it tends to encourage a repeat. And usually, the best way of avoiding repeat instances is to make a point that even if there's a cost involved, you have to conform to our bylaws unless you have a good reason. And in this case, the reason is simply that you made a mistake not realizing where the property line was. And that's something that I recognize that a lot of homeowners might make the same mistake, but on the other hand, it's a pretty important thing, you're supposed to find out. So I'm still thinking about where I'm going to land on this. The recommend, what happens tonight might send us to council meeting or not. At the council meeting, though, is the place we would make the final decision of whether we will advertise the variance or not, and then if we do advertise it, whether we actually grant it. I'm inclined to let this go to council, simply to give me a bit more time to think about it, with no suggestion that I'm going to be voting in favor of this when it goes to council.
Thank you, this is indeed a challenging, a challenging item. My view, in listening to the presentation and the information before us, the information provided through staff, through Council Rintul's questions, is that there was two mistakes. One is that the measurement from the fence, not knowing it was the property line, done by the resident, but I think there was a mistake in the drafting of the bylaw, in that it gave variance, sorry, it gave discretion to the, to the inspector to grant, grant not it being a firm requirement to have the survey before commencing construction after the, after the pad was built. Without, without that piece there, the individual, having made his mistake, is, is in effect permitted to continue, and now bears a significant consequence as a result, in terms of however many thousands of dollars it will cost to move the building. The best thing for the community is to not grant a variance, is to, is to have it adhere to our, have it to adhere to our bylaws. While you have a neighbor who supports it at this time, there may be a neighbor in the future who doesn't, and it's, it's best practice not to set a precedent. So in the best of worlds, I would say, given that there was a mistake on either side, that the building should be moved, but that the cost of the building should be split between the parties. I don't know if that's an option, but I put that out.
Council Rintul and Council Wainwright?
Yeah, thank you, Madam Chair. I concur the bylaw, not just the interpretation of, of the bylaw, or the option to interpret the bylaw, but the bylaw itself may be of some concern in my mind. And I say that in part because I think anytime we're classifying a building of, of this size on a foundation as an accessory building, that it's likely in the best interest of all parties to see a building location certificate prepared, and as we look to see some further infill and some density in projects, you know, similar to this, that that might be an aspect of the bylaw that needs to be addressed. I'd rather think about the mayor's suggestion than comment on it immediately with respect to a possible cost-sharing scenario here, but it's intriguing. What I would ask through the staff, if I may, Madam Chair, is, Mr. Bradley made the point with regard to the fifteen inches of the, of the concrete pad that is in contravention of the bylaw. Would it be the opinion of staff that that segment of the concrete pad need to be removed, or is it just the addition enabling the building to be moved fifteen inches?
The foundation survey is taken from the foundation to property line, so if the concrete remains in place, and that portion of the structure being the foundation would still be in the setback area, so technically, it should be removed to remove all structures from that setback area that's required.
Okay, thank you. And to staff, if I may, other than finding, other than the recommendations that are, that are here, for example, approving the accessory building and leaving it, I guess, as a charge on title that is nonconforming, are there any other options with respect to this dwelling? We've got sort of an A or B scenario here. Is there anything else that may have been entertained in the composition of the report?
Through the chair to Councilor Rintul, the options that would be available in this case is to approve the variance, to allow the building to be at this reduced setback, or to deny the variance and rectify the location of the building.
And if council, if committee the whole doesn't entertain the variance, and the building is required to be brought back into conformance, is there any avenue at that point in time for the town, further to in the process? Are there any penalties, any, any options that could be considered at that time? Or is that the conclusion of this matter?
Through the chair again, I'm not, I'm not, maybe perhaps not too clear on what you may be implying. You mentioned a notice on title, that's usually done when there's an unsafe condition on a site, or if there's a pre-existing situation, not one that's created actively during an application.
If I can, through the chair, typically in a situation like this, if the variance is denied, a timeframe would be given by staff to rectify the situation, and, and then if it's not rectified by a certain period of time, what the next sort of process item might be, a court order, et cetera, to have it rectified.
So a nonconforming structure would not be placed on title? There's no reference there?
No, no, no. Nonconforming refers to legal nonconforming. In this case, it's illegal. There's no grandfathering.
Are there, did there tend to be, in your knowledge, insurance implications for the property owner in that scenario?
I'm not sure, I'm sorry, I'm not sure what you mean by insurance implications.
Well, we're acknowledging that it's outside the bylaw, that it's nonconforming.
We're not, we're not, well, we're saying it's illegal right now, and they would have to rectify the situation. It's not nonconforming, it's illegal.
But if we give them the variance, then?
Then it's registered on title, and it's, it's, it's legal, it's permitted.
Yeah, thank you.
I'm going to go to Council Fallot next, and then Council Wainwright?
Thank you, Madam Chair. This isn't an easy one, because coming after the fact then opens up the road to, to others, and that's not the way to do business. And there are reasons why we have the rules, fire safety notwithstanding, there are other reasons. And the zoning is such, it says this is where the, the setback is to be. We also have an applicant who appears to have done most of the due diligence, perhaps missed out on one part of it, whether that was an oversight as such. Here we're sitting, and I really, I, I, after listening to, to the proponent and, and having done a site visit to take a look at this morning, I'm not comfortable making a decision yet. I would, I would like to give us a bit more time to filter this information through, because I think there's, there's aspects on both sides of something was missed, and, and I don't know how to go forward with this one.
Thank you, Council Wainwright?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I just wanted to kind of pick up on, on the mayor's remarks about we made a mistake with the bylaw, and I actually, actually would disagree with that. I do see the merit in the town requesting a building placement survey, or a certificate, whatever my colleague, Council Rintul, had mentioned, in terms of having that kind of record. But if, if somebody was proposing to put up an accessory structure in the middle of their backyard that was unquestionably more than twice the setback from, you know, the rear property line, side yard, et cetera, I don't think the building inspector would actually need a survey to tell him that there's no risk of it being within the, the setback. And I could see allowing our staff, the building inspector, to have that kind of discretion. So I don't believe that's a mistake. Now, we may decide that for the purpose of having better documentation in future, we want to routinely require the surveys, that's great. But until we actually do that, I think staff should reasonably have that kind of discretion. So I don't think that was a mistake. And from that point of view, I can't see why we would share the cost of rectifying not knowing where your property line is. Because for a lot of people, figuring that out is actually important when you're thinking about buying the property, like knowing exactly how big your yard is, and what you can do with your property. So that is a piece of due diligence, and it's a pretty important piece of due diligence. Anyway, having said that, all I wanted to do was make the point that I don't feel that we've made a mistake in our bylaw. In terms of the where we go from here, we have a motion on the floor to actually deny this, and I'm hearing a few people, myself included, who would be interested in giving this a little more time for the decision. So an alternative, and I recognize we have the motion on the floor, would be to refer the decision to council without making a recommendation on what it should be. That would give us time to think about it, and a motion would be made the night of the council meeting, which is what has to happen anyway. It's just that there wouldn't even be a suggested motion at that point. I'm okay with that course of action, but I'm also recognizing we've got a motion on the floor already, so.
And I, I guess, if we chose to go that route, we could merely defeat the motion and refer it to?
I think it might be more appropriate to just withdraw the motion and make a motion to refer it to council instead.
Okay, well, I'll let Council Garnett have some comments, and I'll make some comment, my comments as well after.
Yeah, I, this is a very difficult one, because I do believe you acted in good faith. I have no question in my mind that you did. As far as the letter from your neighbor, not that that would play into a decision, but I noticed the house is for sale, so he's the current owner, but the next owner might not be in the same sort of predicament or thought process. Reading the town's or the staff's information in here, they're, it, full conformance with the official community plan, full conformance with the zoning by law with the exception of the requested variances. I struggle with the, the argument that approving variances without a strong rationale weakens the significance of town bylaws. I don't disagree with that, but we recently passed one that I thought had no strong rationale, so that, I know it's not apples and oranges, but that for me is a bit of a problem. But I, I do concur with Council Wainwright. I'd prefer to see this just go to council and make a decision at that time, because then I think it gives us all a little more time to ruminate over it and to make a proper decision. Thank you.
Yeah, I'll, I'll make some comments. So I, I understand, you know, the concern about setting precedents, and there's rules in place for a reason. Having said that, I, my feeling on this is that it doesn't seem to me that it's a case of an individual who submitted some plans, and then went and did something totally different and completely ignored what the permit said, that, you know, they were going to build a, a hundred-foot, square-foot building, and then they built a hundred and fifty square feet. So what they put forward was what they went to build. The only issue was the fact that they erred in determining, assuming where they thought the property line was. Subsequent to that, our inspector was out there a few times, and I, I'm sympathetic to homeowners that do projects like this on a one-off basis. They're not experts in our bylaws and our regulations, and depend greatly, I think, on staff to, to guide them. And so I think the town bears some responsibility in terms of if we thought that it was, that was going to be an issue to have that, that, that survey done, we should have said right then, after that second inspection, that I asked you to get a survey, I still don't have a survey, there's a stop order on this, don't proceed. And that never happened, and I think that was incumbent upon us to, to do that. In regards, the other thing is that I think, you know, in terms of setting a precedent, I'm actually not too concerned about that, because every request for a variance has to come forward, and it's considered on its own merits. So I'm not really that concerned that the message is going to go out across the town that, hey, guess what? If you want to squeak another fifteen inches out of the town, you can do it. I'm, I'm not that concerned about, about that. But, you know, to me, this is, it's, it's a minor amount. The other thing I think of is, okay, what if they actually had decided that they wanted to build up to fifteen inches, and to, you know, to, from, from the line? And then they had come to us and asked for a variance? I think there's a good chance that they, if they'd asked for the variance upfront, that they might have got it, I don't know. I'm thinking about, in my neighborhood, my, my neighbors built a house, they were short, I think it was fourteen or fifteen inches on one of the setbacks, the developer came forward and he asked for the variance, and it was, it was granted, it was no big deal. So I, I guess I'm, I'm flipping it around in terms of what if they had asked for a variance, and would it be likely that that would have been granted under the circumstances? So I don't believe that there was any ill intent. I, I don't believe that it's going to send a message to the rest of the community or set a precedent. I think it's a relatively minor amount, and I think the town bears some responsibility for not nipping it in the bud when we had the chance. So that's, so I would be in favor of allowing the variance. Any other comments? Yes?
Just want to, to clarify what I was, you used the word mistake, and, and referenced the bylaw and, and the inspector. The inspector did not make a mistake. The inspector had the discretion.
the discretion in the situation to not put a stop or quarter and, and request a site survey. I'll use the word now flawed, that I think the bylaw was flawed, in the sense while you can envision, as my colleague, Councilor Wainwright, did, that if the building was in the center of the yard, it would be perfectly obvious to everyone that, that a site survey wasn't necessary to, to confirm the setback. Under the by, under the, under, under the rules, a site survey would still be required by completion of the project, unless the, unless the, the rules were changed. So, I think this is a situation where both sides, that is, the proponent building took a measurement, thinking that was, that was the property line. And the inspector, when he came to look at it, said, well, perhaps that is the, the property line. He wasn't, he wasn't considering, he or she wasn't considering that it could have been a variance. So, I, I, I stick by the statement that I believe the bylaw was flawed, and hence, because of that, it is grounds for the precedent of, of granting the variance, or if we think it's in the best interest of the community to not grant the, the precedent for, for the various reasons stated, that we seek a, seek a fair, a fair way forward to, to have the building moved.
One more time, Councilor Rintul?
Yeah, thank you. Just to, to, to clarify my understanding, I mean, we voted in favor of the motion. This is going to council at any rate to be revisited, similar scenario to what we saw two weeks ago. And so, in this case, I'm not saying I'm against removing, you know, the, the, the motion was there, I didn't move it, I seconded it. It's coming back to council in either event. So, we either vote in favor of the motions presented, it's coming back. I noticed there's not with that any requirement for any consultation, or going out to neighbors, looking for input or feedback on this. And so, I don't know what changes when we bring it back to, to council in terms of consultation, except for the opportunity for public participation at start of the meeting. We might get some feedback to allow us to help with the decision. So, either way, the two scenarios, this is coming back to council next week.
So, Councilor Garnett, you made the motion, I believe?
What did he?
Yes, yeah. So, are you...
I forgot, I'll repeat.
There's, there's been a, a couple of options floated, that we could vote on the, the recommend, the mo, the, the motion that's on the floor, or that you might withdraw that and refer it to council for further discussion.
I'm willing to withdraw the motion and refer it to council.
Secondary?
I'll withdraw.
Okay. And would we like to make another motion?
Sure. I'll just move that we refer the application to council for a decision.
Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor? Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you for that. Seeing no other business on the agenda for this evening, I will call for a motion to adjourn.
Move adjournment.
Second.
All in favor? Thank you.